Okay, welcome to the March 18th regular meeting with Town of Niqwa. All received our agenda and our packages, first order of business to approve the agenda. Be it resolved that we hereby approve the regular meeting agenda for March 18th, 2025, moved by. Councillor Costin Chuck seconded by Councillor Nadol. All in favor, opposed, carried. Now you all received the minutes. Be it resolved that we hereby approve the minutes of the regular meeting held March 4th, 2025, and the special meeting held March 11th circulated, moved by. Deputy Mayor Parrott seconded by Councillor Costin Chuck. Any questions on the minutes? All in favor, opposed, carried. Okay, council reports. Anybody have any council reports? Councillor Nadol.
I've just got a quick one. The local advisory library committee, we met on March 10th and we worked really hard at creating a new committee handbook just to kind of help govern ourselves, keep everything going. That way, as we do get a new committee member, it would be great that they're running when they start. So we're still looking for interested people, so something just to know. That's everything.
Okay, thanks, Theresa. Deputy Mayor Parrott.
So I attended the plan conference, the planning conference in Brandon. And like the presentations were just phenomenal and we'd used a map today and how to use that map was part of it. But they talked about planning subdivisions, planning cities, long-range thinking, and you know, how municipalities that are growing need to look at different ways to support themselves at the present and going on into the future. So you know, as far as conferences go, it was one heck of a good one. So it was a bonus. I mean, of course, our two building inspectors were also there. And it should be known that we are mentoring inspectors in two other planning districts because our inspector Jeff Bronze is Class III and he's able to train the inspectors in the other planning districts so they can gain their Class III. So we have a lot of talent in our planning officer. That's pretty good.
Good, thanks, Murray. Anyone else? Councillor Gerard.
Yeah, March 17th, the Finance Committee met. We're getting down to the short strokes on our budget conversations. Obviously, the town is tasked with some large infrastructure requirements with some of the new constructions going on on the east side of the community. Plus, we've listened time and time again to residents on road repair and there's very active conversations going on. So but I think we're just about there, should be coming up to the public fair or soon.
That's great, thanks, Gerard. Okay, that was on everyone. So then we'll move on to operations, mountain period, Dini.
Thank you. So our Hamilton Street project dig is partially dig, anyway. We did the main portion of the excavation, that is complete for now. Looking with our consultants about the next phase of road work if we can complete it. So they're providing some numbers for me so we can start issuing those quote requests out. And I can actually circulate this to council if you guys want to have a look. Here's some of the progress reports, site investigation reports from the consultant when they're on site. The role of our pipeline with the addition of our third well is ongoing. Our contractors have started on that one and we've had a few meetings with Water Services Board about the progress on that one. So to date, they have done a whole bunch of using, physical work. They've got over 270 meters installed and we did a pretty substantial tie-in today. It's about over during our meeting that it's complete now. So they're on 15 working days there, so the project's progressing nicely. We've got two ongoing questionable, well, one ongoing questionable leak and then the second one kind of surfaced as potential. So I had a consultant come out, contractor come out last week to investigate those. They came back with inconclusive data, saying that they don't feel there's a leak in either site. So the one foundation that we talked about is just to be groundwater. We'll keep monitoring the area and make sure that it's not a water leak going on, but all signs point to just groundwater and water table, unfortunately. And then the other suspect business has some issues with discoloration and then just air in their water line. And again, we feel that may be an internal problem that surfaced out because we could not find anything conclusive when we did monitoring on the outside of the building.
Is it when they turn their hot water tap on?
I don't know what side it was on. I know that the site has multiple auxiliary tanks just to make up for surge water and stuff like that, so.
Yeah, because when the thermostat on the tank is malfunctioning, it overheats the water and creates steam and then just jets up.
Yeah, so. But there are no confirmed leak of discoloration, so that's why we're concerned. If they did have a cracked service line and it was sucking in groundwater, we would receive that discoloration, but no other areas businesses had any questionable water quality, so.
But water surges will also disturb long-term time zones.
Correct, so we had an insight, so we thought we'd just investigate that site just to ensure we're safe. So we're in the spring, kind of. Pole Works has already started doing some pothole patching. They've already secured one of, I'm sure, many loaves of coal mix so we can continue to monitor and patch potholes as they come viable. We do need kind of favorable weather to pothole patch, so annoying as they are, I can't fill a pothole when it's full ice. So we just kind of have to wait for stuff to melt a little bit, dry a little bit, and then we can plant that. So they'll do their best to try to dry out these potholes and fill them. So we just asked the public to patience. With budget discussions, like Councillor Gerard mentioned, we have made discussions and moves towards looking at the rental lease of a pothole patcher again for spring. So I'll be contacting the company on that and ensuring that we can get our hands on a machine for a sizable amount of time. Another concerning item that still is surfacing, and I have a broken record on this, is grease. We're still seeing ridiculous amount of grease being dumped down the drain by residential houses. Substantial grease, like abnormal, unhealthy amounts, people. We just had word of one yesterday that we have to go unplugged and that's why we just did another social media post about grease and we actually went and had a leaflet sent out. We've narrowed it down to three houses that are responsible for this. Three houses plug a main, okay? And it's likely that not all three houses were responsible, so there's potentially one house that plugged an eight-inch pipe, okay? This is ridiculous. When I go to conferences and I talk to the colleagues, their first response is this must be on like restaurant row. I says, no, this is residential and their jaws drop. They cannot believe the headaches we have here with grease. I will be investigating the causes of, and probably bring something forward. We'll have to investigate a fine process again, like you're causing substantial grief to your neighbors, to our infrastructure, to our staff, everyone, and someone's going to have to start paying for this because I don't think the whole community as a whole should be subsidizing some irresponsibilities.
So we have contact with Dr. Ethan, we speak to him?
We've, can't narrow it down completely yet, but we've narrowed it down to three homes.
Can you potentially go to the three homes and say what's happening?
Well, they were not being provided with a leaflet and then it will probably be followed from beyond that.
Yeah, we can, we can have people at work, we got 40, but we'll try and fix stuff like this, that's just ridiculous.
Something has to be done.
What neighborhood was this in?
This is on First Avenue from, I'll just leave it as First Avenue. So this is a PVC pipe, so it's not a quality issue with our infrastructure. This is 100% resident problem.
Very disappointing, we, you know, we sent out through Facebook, we have it on our water bills. The, I don't know how much more you can.
Are you scoping the lines again this year?
I am actually pricing our own camera unit, that's how frustrated I am. And that means that I will be looking to recoup 120,000 off the residents that are at fault. So we'll be issuing some stiff fines. It'd be my recommendation if we start going down that road. Because I don't think, again, the entire utility should be paying for this a whole. I think that we, 100% recommend in fines being imposed to guilty parties.
I think we've got to that point already.
That's my happiness.
Yeah, well, kind of right, right up there with the potholes.
It does, at least I can treat potholes.
Yeah, you can.
You know, I find a way to fill potholes with grease.
My problem is there's many like grease products out there because I go to a lot of conferences. There's a magnitude of products that are out there. We've experimented with pretty much every one of them. They all work at varying degrees, but they're also not meant to treat the quantity of grease we're encountering, so. Even the suppliers scratching their, they love me, but their products can't work fast enough.
It's not just grease, it's the oil products.
Yeah, so it's fats, oils and greases. So fried grease, bacon fat.
And this isn't rinsing, rinsing frying fat, this is dumping a deep.
You're, yes.
Yeah. Hails.
There was a YouTube video on how to deal with grease. You take your tin foil and push it in your sink basket and pour it in there. It solidifies throughout the garbage can.
So again, we've had many resident suggestions on how to do this. We'll probably again look at contacting grease drop-off depot points.
We're trying to look at a program of some sort, maybe, you know, even if it's just a few. You get a few drained and maybe a little more.
It's a biodiesel.
But it's garbage, it's hard to get people to realize that because we're all about garbage and recycle and grease doesn't seem to fit into either of those. And so I think it's in liquid form, I'll put it where the liquids go. Where if, when you get where you understand, put it in a vessel of some sort and just put it in your garbage. I think people wouldn't have trouble with it once they convert their thought to that it's garbage. Put it in whatever it came out of or put it into an ice cream pail and just set it into the garbage, that's.
Oh, that's very true.
Yeah.
The three, the sewer is for the three P's, that's it.
So we're also suspect that this grease is causing the downstream issues out the wastewater stream line. Because it's also like coming up our disk filter at a rate.
It would.
We're assuming it's faster than it should. Never wonder if it's just this filming process that's happening with the greases.
Okay, well, thanks, I think, for that report. But anyways, yes, we're certainly going to have to make some decisions, well done. All right, moving on, any other discussions, Dini, no? Moving on, correspondent Colleen.
This is a letter received from Municipal and Northern Relations Department of Manitoba, specifically the deputy minister. Last year, there was a reach out to their department to take a look at the governance of Beautiful Plains County Courthouse Building and the related legislation. So this is, just to give you a little background on this, the county courthouse building, under the legislation, there is a specific act that names the rural municipality of Rosedale, the new spell North Cypress Langford, and the Town of Niqwa as equal owners of the courthouse building. And over time, you know, things changed and we're trying to just get this back on track now and kind of stay in the lane, coloring the lines and figure out how we go forward because it is a big fabulous historic building that we want to make sure gets protected. So anyway, the department reviewed the Beautiful Plains County Buildings Act, which governs this building as well as other information regarding the building. Department staff also last year met with municipal representatives from all the entities regarding the matter to talk through, you know, the discussion about the governance. The act provides a framework for the building that includes in section four, clear direction that any expenses and rents shall be divided amongst the municipalities based on the extent of their interest in the building. The act also provides the minister with authority to determine the extent of municipal interest in the building in the case of a disagreement. Upon review of the relevant information and considering the intent of this act to ensure shared municipal responsibility for this building, the minister's authority is hereby exercised to confirm that the Town of Niqwa, the municipality of North Cypress Langford, and the rural municipality of Rosedale each bear a one-third share of interest in the building equally. These municipalities are directed to ensure that all revenues from the building, including the rental of the building premises to any party, shall be used entirely to offset the expenses associated with the building. Any net profits or expenses related to the building shall be shared among the municipalities in equal proportion. The property's liability to taxation is established in accordance with the Municipal Assessment Act and that will remain unchanged. So what that means is the Town of Niqwa is unable to affect taxation on that building. It is my sincere hope that this decision will enable your municipalities to move forward constructively with a clear understanding of your joint and equal responsibility for the governance and maintenance of this historical site. The preservation of the historical sites for the benefit of future generations is an important municipal function and I note the significance of this site to the history of your region.
Okay, Mr. Costin.
Yeah, you know, it's been an ongoing conversation with our partners and because of, you know, there's been a lot of things that have taken place over the course of, what, the last 25 years. So this is really just a kind of a resolution of that, which we sure appreciate the minister coming in. And you know, the partner municipalities have been working as a one-third, one-third, one-third basis while we were waiting for this result. So essentially, it will be a question of going forward from this, knowing that that's how it's going to operate, which is could be great, so.
Okay. Moving on, tax sale manager, Colleen.
So under an old bylaw, bylaw number 3084, we actually appointed tax service to service our collection representative in the case of tax sales. And more specifically, in that same year, we then appointed Donna Zinku as that tax sale manager. She remains in that position. She, however, has asked us to do a new resolution to add a name to the appointment of Tyler Burnside, an associate of tax service, because she's planning some time away from the office and vacation that coincides, unfortunately, with the tax sale in Niqwa. So she, to get that covered and make sure the appointment is legit, she wants us to update our resolution to include Tyler Burnside.
Okay. Any questions on that? Okay, resolution reads, be it resolved at pursuant by law number 3084 of the Town of Niqwa, tax service be appointed to manage property tax arrears. Recovery for the Town of Niqwa be further resolved at pursuant to by law number 3084. Following individuals be appointed to tax sale, appointed tax sale managers for the Town of Niqwa, Donna Zinku, Vice President of Tax Service, and Tyler Burnside, Associate of Tax Service. Moved by, Councillor Costin Chuck seconded by Councillor Gerard. Any questions? All in favor, opposed, carried. Rossburn subdivision trail.
So this was actually brought forward at your meeting, at your last particular meeting of council. And this is a resolution to enter into a memorandum of understanding that the Rossburn Subdivision Trail Association can support of the Transcanada Trail that runs from Niqwa to Russell. At our particular meeting last time, it was recommended and moved that we table this to get a little bit more information. And so now we'll bring it forth tonight. One of the pieces of information that they were looking at was understanding better the deductible for in case there is some liability that gets incurred there under insurance. And I think we discussed that night, people were thinking it was 25,000, it is not. We have confirmed with our insurance provider, it's actually $5,000. But she was very clear, that's if you're proven that you're liable. That doesn't mean any incident that happened on that one-half mile trail in our municipality, we'd be liable and have to be inducted for anything. It means you had to be proven liable that we did something wrong. So you know, simply falling off of, you know, your bicycle or tripping while you walk is not liable. It, you know, however, let's just say we knew there was an issue where rocks were on the trail, large rocks, I'm not talking pebbles, and so somebody got hurt and we knew about it in advance and did nothing to remedy that situation, then we couldn't be held liable. So the point is do your due diligence, make sure it's safe, make sure it's looked after, make sure it's maintained to a suitable standard and there shouldn't be any issues.
Okay, any questions?
Well, I think further to that, Dini was able to tell us that, you know, what maintenance we have been doing, the mowing that was in question and the cutting is not outside of what we've already been doing. In fact, we've had, like the letter said, a gentleman's agreement all this time. Without this MLU, this just gives the association maybe a better handle on where everybody's at. And now with further clarification, I think we, I'm in favor of signing this MLU tonight.
Okay.
And if I can speak on it too, since this is my, my group that I'm a part of. The purpose of the MLU is just because councils come and go. So it's just that each council knows what their responsibilities are. And because there's a number of municipalities along the trail, sometimes they forget that this is part of their responsibility to keep their portion of trail maintained as per what's understood under that agreement. So that's all it is, is just clarifying who's required for what. And it's not even about a municipality not keeping up its maintenance. It's just when there was a disaster, when we had all that water, when we lost our lake also. That same year, there was portions of river along the way to Niqwa here where it actually, the riverbank eroded and then who's responsible for repairing that. And that isn't something that the trail is responsible for when it's something that happens in a municipality. So that's, that's why this all came about. And yeah, I don't see anything different than what we would be already incurring and I don't see it hurting us. So I would recommend that council definitely considers agreeing with the MLU.
Any further questions, comments? Okay, be it resolved that the council of the Town of Niqwa agreed to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Rossburn Subdivision Trail Association in support of the Transcanada Trail that runs from Niqwa to Russell. The original motion, 2025-41, March 4th, was tabled until March 18th. Councillor Sisley, so in this particular motion, moved by.
Well, it still be moved by, or Nadol, I'm sure.
Oh, okay.
We're just bringing it back to the table.
Bring it back to the table, okay. So then all we need is in, all in favor? Opposed, carried. Not sure, Colleen or Dini on the Water Services Board?
So as an annual requirement, I guess, interest from the Mental Water Services Board, they sent out a capital works project request form for communities to apply to. We identified four projects within here that we'd like to request funding for. First being a lift station for project 320. Hopefully, we can get a form of assistance on that one. Second being sewer mains for again, project 320, water mains for project 320. And then finally, water tower improvements and safety requirements, just a general overhaul of the town. Easton, can I fill the form out on the dollar value?
Lift station, 1.1 million, water mains, 2.3 million, sewer mains, 2.1 million, and the water tower, 600,000. So just so you know as well, we participated in a team meeting with the Water Services Board last week. Travis Parsons gave an overview for whoever in the province wanted to participate of what the Water Services Board does. They changed the process a little bit such that we don't necessarily need this resolution to submit our request because it's just, it's just expressions of our interest in obtaining funding. But they are very clear in their document. They said that they recommend that we include these projects requests on our next council meeting and to meet the deadline on March 31st to submit these. So I just felt the best way of recording it is through a resolution of council on our minutes. So we've actually already sent those requests in because of the timeframe that they're going to try and meet and set projects for the next budget year, which on Thursday, the budget's coming down to give them a little bit of headway and working with what they need to work with. So if you're supportive of those projects, we have a resolution.
Okay, any questions? Whereas the Manitoba Water Services Board is requesting the identification of water and sewer projects slated for the next five years in rural Manitoba in order to prepare a capital plan for the prioritization and allocation of funding. Therefore, be it resolved that the council of the Town of Niqwa hereby identifies following water and sewer projects to be considered for technical and financial assistance through the Manitoba Water Services Board Capital Plan. Lift station, new development, project 320, sewer mains, new development, project 320, water mains, new development, project 320, and the water tower repair and maintenance. Moved by, Deputy Mayor Parrott, seconded by Councillor Gerard. All in favor, opposed, carried. Okay, so this one, I guess I could talk to a bit. This Niqwa, Mendosah, Carberry, Minto, Odana, Elton, North Cypress Langford are all partners in a Class 1 Waste Management Facility that we all know as Evergreen Environmental Technologies. This, over the years, has been a very successful program. And one of the things that there is so many partners involved with this that we have a lot of transportation on PR 466, which is south of Highway 16. And that road is severely starting to deteriorate and needs some capital upgrades to it. And so as, as a group, we're partnering together to request the province to be able to take some steps to repair and upgrade that road because it's absolutely needed. And there's times this past year where it actually has gotten to the point that it hasn't been safe. So if you support this resolution, we will send off a request to the province. Motion reads, is there any other questions on? Motion reads, whereas the municipalities of Niqwa, Mendosah, Carberry, Minto, Odana, Elton, and North Cypress Langford are regional partners in operating a Class 1 Waste Management Facility known as Evergreen Environmental Technologies at 111417. And whereas the main hall road for accessing Evergreen is PR 466 south of PTH 16, which is regularly impacted by truck and vehicle traffic that exceeds the intended general use of this road and creates safety issues due to its degradation and poor condition. And whereas PR 466 is in dire need of capital upgrades and maintenance to ensure the continued use for the future, therefore be it resolved that the Town of Niqwa requests the province of Manitoba to take appropriate steps to repair, upgrade PR 466 to a reasonable standard that will ensure the safe use of this road for the benefit of all the users. Moved by, Councillor Costin Chuck seconded by Deputy Mayor Parrott. All in favor, opposed, carried. Broadly access, Colleen.
So I'll just read you a report to council on this particular topic to give you a good understanding of what resolution you'll be discussing that meeting. So on March 24th, 2023, the PC government announced nine new schools, which included a new grade nine to 12 vocational school and childcare center in Niqwa. To prepare for the new school, the Beautiful Plains School Division proceeded with action to secure a site within the southwest of 341415 and filed an application for subdivision in July of 2023. Council approved that subdivision on September 27th, 2023, subject to a development agreement for servicing the property and meeting all of the conditions imposed by the various government departments and agencies during the circulation process. This subdivision was then conditionally approved by the province on October 16th, 2023. was then conditionally approved by the province on October sixteenth of two thousand twenty-three. In November of two thousand twenty-three, we all knew the government changed and the new NEB government announced, has still announced their commitment to proceed with the construction of the previously met schools. However, they noted that the timelines would be impacted as files were reviewed. Work continued, however, insofar as meeting the subdivision conditions. One of the conditions is related to obtaining a traffic impact study, the purpose of which will identify the mountain type of traffic that will be generated by the development, the potential impact on the adjacent road network, meaning PTH sixteen, and the type of highway improvements that would be required to safely accommodate the increased traffic. Once completed, the study must be formally approved by the Department of Transportation and Infrastructure before the condition can be released and the subdivision released. So based on information contained in that traffic impact study, it was very clear that the potential addition of a new school in the southwest of thirty-four, fourteen, fifteen, in proximity now to a new regional hospital, will not only increase the density and type of traffic, but will increase the risk to public safety east of Nipewa. Also complicating that review was the location of the intersection of PTH sixteen and PTH number five. Of course, it's a lot that we all know is at the bottom of two hills, one on either side. Um, the, uh, location and the width of the Whiteland River Bridge and the existing location of the Broadway Avenue access that currently sits within the PTH sixteen and five intersection functional area and fails to meet the standards for proximity to intersections at a distance of two hundred and eight meters. Unfortunately, based on a thorough analysis, the ability to safely accommodate the additional traffic generated by the addition of a new school east of Nipewa will require the closure of Broadway Avenue connection to PTH sixteen in advance of or to coincide with the opening of the new school. So based on time constraints to close the subdivision and to secure the land, uh, the Department of Transportation and Infrastructure agreed to release the approval of the traffic study. However, in doing so, now requires a council resolution agreeing to closing it and still place that on their file. But please note that at this point in time, the province has not formally announced the capital construction of a new school in Nipewa. But I would propose that, um, because the administrative procedures are still ongoing and the province has been supporting them, uh, is a very good predictor that a school will come. It's just about when. So tonight I'm asking for you to discuss and debate the, uh, and technically it's mandatory to get that subdivision closed, um, the closure of Broadway Avenue.
Okay, any discussions? Deputy Mayor?
So we, you know, in discussions with the province, um, one of the comments that they made was that the highway sixteen is a TransCanada highway meant for TransCanada traffic, not for internal, uh, town traffic and access. We have our Mountain Avenue is our main access in. We have other access points that have been there over time. And when we did our subdivision on the old sand property, we were, um, told to close Procus Street, which we ended up doing. And, you know, that, that was one I took into town all the time and habits change and, you know, learning to think about it now. So you get used to changes and we all have to get used to changes. A school is a very important part of our community. We are currently three hundred students, overcapaciting just inside the Town of Nipewa itself. And this is a vocational high school, which is also going to be training healthcare, uh, workers. So it's, it's a good fix. You may have noticed over the years that a lot of the approaches to farmers' fields have been taken out and only one access allowed onto the fields unless there were extenuating circumstances. So we got used to that. Service lanes cannot be put in this location due to the location of the bridge and highway five. So this has all been panned out and the importance of the school means that we can travel a different road to get in, which would be accessed across from the highway to, uh,
Highway.
The high, yeah, the Hider Station or coming in, um, on Brown Avenue and, and down Hamilton. So it's just something to get used to and people do get used to new things. We gripe about them, but we end up doing it. So I'll vote in favor.
No, those are good comments. Um, you're right, uh, uh, we went through the, the changes that had to be made on, uh, on the railway property. And, um, you know, the other thing is, uh, we've all seen the functional design that goes through town here as, as the community changes, as, uh, as the highway, uh, has improvements in that. There's a lot of other changes that would come into the community. And, uh, you know, it's not a case of, uh, of, of highways trying to make our lives miserable. It is all in safety. And, uh, and we do know that, uh, we do know that that access on Broadway, there was certainly has been times that it's not the safest. And, uh, so unfortunately, um, you're right, people have to get used to, um, change, used to change. And, uh, and again, as a community grows, we're all gonna have to be used to continual changes.
I think it's a small sacrifice for a great thing.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, the school is such a priority. It's just desperate for that.
I want to think it's worth note that it doesn't mean it's happening tomorrow. It just means we intend that it will happen in time. But, yeah.
Okay. All right. Motion reads whereas Beautiful Plains School Division is completing a subdivision of property within thirty-four, fourteen, fifteen to secure the land for the potential construction of a new school. And whereas Department of Transportation and Infrastructure, Infrastructure MTI requested the completion of traffic study as requirement for approving the subdivision, which would analyze the amount and type of traffic that would be generated by the development, the potential impact on the adjacent road network, and the type of highway improvements that would be required to safely accommodate the increased traffic. And whereas based on the findings of the traffic impact study and the input from MTI, it has been determined that in order to safely accommodate the additional traffic east of Nipewa, the Broadway Avenue connection to PTH sixteen, sixteen will be required to be closed. Therefore, be it resolved that the Town and Eepaw hereby agrees to the closure of the Broadway Avenue connection to PTH sixteen, understanding that such closure is dependent on the construction of the new school in southwest thirty-four, fourteen, fifteen, and with such closure to be completed in advance of or to coincide with the opening of the new school in the future. Moved by, um, Counselor Gerard, seconded by Deputy Mayor Parrot. All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Um, any other business? Seeing none? Be it resolved that the council of the Town and Eepaw do now adjourn this regular meeting council at seven thirty-eight PM. Moved by Counselor, uh, Nidol, and seconded by Counselor Costantuck. All in favor? Opposed? Carry.